We're gonna make a beginning.
Appreciate it.
This show on the road.
Father God, we turn our hearts to you this morning and we're mindful of the season of the year for pray for your birth and also your death and resurrection. We pray you would just grant us grace and help us to lead lives pleasing your side. We pray for wisdom and direction today in the meeting that we would seek your wisdom, that we would do those things correctly for our constituents. Be with those that are in law enforcement, those who protect our country, watch over them and keep them safe. We pray it all in the name of Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Let's lift the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome.
All right, our last commissioner meeting of calendar year 2019, first item in business is the minutes. The email and all wishes, prayers.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second, all favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Calum, payroll number 2045 for calendar year 2019 totals 224,000, $178.90. So we have 275 claims in the amount of 947,922.28.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Three zero. Okay. Scott, right to you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Congratulations, grandpa.
Thank you very much. Two times.
Two times, double shock. As of this morning, we have eighty-six inmates in jail, thirty-four pretrial Superior, twenty-four pretrial Circuit, six F-6, six DOC. Those numbers are pretty good, actually. So the last couple of weeks, we have been very, very busy and actually had a mild weekend this weekend, so our numbers have stayed low. It's pretty good for a Monday. So other than that, I really don't have anything else to report other than jail numbers unless anybody has any questions. We're just trying to get through the holidays and of course, everybody wants time off during the holidays, so we've all been rotating through that and trying to make sure that everybody gets their time as needed. So if there are no questions, I'm gonna get out of here and go back and get some more stuff done, so.
Okay. Go get busy.
All right, have a good holiday, but I'll see you guys. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. Okay, Josh, we have you next.
Morning.
Good morning.
Backhoe crews working south, probably winding that down very soon, probably this week, tearing some tree stumps out and getting some stuff ready for spring work. The road conversions up north, 400 West between 1,000 and Marzane is now completely done with stone. We will finish all the ditch work next spring and summer so that we can coat it in the normal chip and seal season in the summertime. That goes for 1,000 north between Marzane and 300 West. That also has been widened. We've got most of the front slopes done. Back slope work will happen this spring, summer, but it is completely covered in all the stone. 500 West, all base stone is done. We have probably thirty percent of the top stone to coat down from the bridge back to the first couple houses on the west side, but we were started seventy threes on that Friday and obviously today we're, you know, doing other things, but later this week we'll jump back on that and that road should be covered in stone. So the goal is by Wednesday evening, all stone will be hauled on those conversion roads for the year. Then they can go through their freeze and thaw and we'll readdress things in the spring.
Sure.
That said, I haven't converted many of my trucks over because as some of you know, but not everyone know, that once you convert from stone to salt, it's a back and forth thing. So this week, we will, once we're done with stone, all trucks will then be converted over to salt. So we'll be ready for anything. Kinda like the sheriff, it's the end of the year, people are rotating through, using up vacation time and personal time and things of that sort. So but rest assured, if there's a weather emergency, they all know what they signed up for. So we'll be there to take care of it regardless of who's scheduled off, unfortunately. We did start cutting brush last week just because that's what we do in the winter and it's just getting to that point. So you'll see us out cutting brush and trimming back the roads and things. I have stone bids for 2020, so I'd like to open those.
Okay.
And I will, if you want to reference, I'll pick seventy-three stone as our reference to tell you guys.
All right.
So I have US Ag, which is Lynn Grove, eight bucks a ton. This one is Rock Creek, seven sixty-five a ton. Stone Street, oh. Eleven ninety a ton. And IMI, I'll pick Lufton, seventy threes are eight fifteen a ton. And those are for commercials, and they're the same in Malphalia, so I would like to accept all of them. It's standard for each year, we accept all of them due to where we're working. We use all of them. Obviously, by price, Stone Street's probably the least, but there's times we need to use them when we're up in Jefferson in that corner.
Motion to accept those.
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Three zero.
That is all I have, unless you have something for me.
I did get a letter from one of the people that were concerned about one of the chip and seal that got a lot of stone out in the drive or out in the yard, so I'll share that with you afterwards.
Okay. Yeah, and I think, did I cover that last meeting? Unfortunately, that's the reality to chip and seal. There's a certain ratio of stone that we put down when we are chip and sealing. It's kind of a tricky thing to adjust because if you don't put enough stone, the oil comes through and it's hot and sticky and tacky. So, you know, there is stone that ends up in people's yards and intersections and side ditches.
That's maybe a little more than that. I'll show you the picture afterward.
Yeah, yeah.
So you're aware.
Very good.
All right, happy holidays.
Thanks.
Thanks, sir.
Nate.
All right, just a few items for you today. Just hopefully one of my last updates for a little while on this federal aid application. Everything submitted, I checked NDOT's website and they've closed it all down, so obviously they're reviewing everyone's applications for this federal aid call. Soon as I know more, and I'll certainly brief you on those projects. In talking about Bridge 193, that's the Wabash River Bridge there on 300 West, working with USI to settle on a monitoring system in a headache bar. Most of the examples that we've seen for headache bars are kind of more synonymous with what you'd see at like a great access for parking garages where you hit like an aluminum bar prior to bumping into the structure. So you damage a thousand dollar bar versus damaging into the precast concrete on a parking garage. So those really aren't appropriate for our high-speed applications, so we're looking at better, better design types than that. So we want to make sure that this is gonna work long-term for us. Looking at comparable structures based on the volume of traffic and our speeds, when it's hit, what's gonna happen. So we're going through those different options. My fear is what I've seen many of the low-cost designs, what I usually check newspaper reports about it, they've been characterized as what I wrote down here passionately negative public reaction. So I want to make sure that we kind of try to avoid that, even if our design may be a little more expensive. I want to try to avoid a massive negative public outcry over whatever we put in. It may save us some money, but we're gonna try to go for a community crossings grant. I feel confident we have a good chance at that, but certainly I think it's in our best interest to get something that's gonna last a long time. It's too important of a bridge for us. So I hope to have something going into the new year. I want to get something ready for the next community crossings application, which will start in January of next year. So we need to get the ball rolling there. A little update on the North Corridor study. Butler, Freeman and Seifert's been working on that plan. We've had some meetings with some different key county and city agencies recently. Should be early 2020 when we have enough information to start kind of presenting the data publicly. We've identified locations where additional turning movements need to be captured so we can kind of look at where traffic's going to drive off of different routes. So we're gonna try to get that put together, hopefully. And I want to say by, certainly by March of next year, we should have a lot of this data ready and we may even try to move forward a little earlier than that. So just wanted to at least let you know that that is not stagnant by any means. There's been a lot going on in the background. So it's certainly, I would hope to have been done with it by now, but I want to at least let you know that we're still moving forward, just there's more data that we want to have. So on the road conversions, I have, we have a lot of right-of-way that has come in recently and every meeting, we end up adopting certain right-of-ways or accepting right-of-ways. But I just want to make the point again, we have not received a lot of 100% of different road sections. We're falling one or two or three property owners short of all the right-of-way in different sections. So it's limiting what options we have. I think we had talked about trying to select which roads were gonna be for conversions in 2020, 2021 or further on. But I wanted to point out that of the road right-of-ways we requested, which was, I believe, nineteen or twenty-one sections of road, we've only received 100% from two road sections. Oblique Road out to County Line, from Veracruz out to the County Line, and 800 East County Line, south to the river. And part of that was because it was three property owners, I believe, that owned all the right-of-way along with that. So again, I want to try to encourage everybody that has received the right-of-way packets to turn those in, or if you have questions, call my office, call the Highway Department. We want to make sure that we get the right-of-ways in. That way, we give the commissioners the best options. So at this time, I'm not gonna ask that you make any selections on roads for the next schedule, just because I think we have, we have quite a few right-of-ways that came in.
Fifteen.
Fifteen more, so.
Some of those may be minor subdivisions from every plan and not a road conversion.
Yep, so that happens as well. So I want to look through that. Hopefully, in January, we have a few more right-of-ways come in, so we give you some more options for it. So with that, appreciate it. And then the right-of-ways that we do have, that'd be the last item on my agenda. Recommend approval of additional right-of-ways for the road conversions and minor subdivisions.
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Three zero. All right. Appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Merry Christmas. Whatever you want to do.
We met in session here. This is Nate's contract going forward. I'd appreciate a motion to accept that.
I would make a motion to accept a new contract that we are doing for the county engineer. Due to some additional appropriations from the state coming down to the county, we've been able to increase his salary accordingly. So I'd motion to approve that.
Second.
All favor?
We appreciate all the work he does and all the grant money he's brought into the county.
Three zero.
Thank you.
And we appreciate the state's help.
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. President, while we're still on highway business, do you have any updates then in terms of highway barn issues that?
We do. Mr. Barkus has withdrew his petition to sell property to the county. So we are currently looking at the possibility of the site on 200, possible.
Okay, so I know we had a landowner in the area.
Correct.
So, okay. Has some concern for that, so put that to rest.
More specific, 201.
South.
More specific between.
That's as specific as we can be right now. We haven't addressed it completely with the person yet.
All right.
Then we'll go to Ron and Claude and.
Dewey.
The group.
It's not Claude's first rodeo, is it Claude?
I don't know if you, any of you know this gentleman. Dewey Zent?
No, no, no.
No.
We know that guy too.
Dewey Randall. Nice to meet you.
Yeah, Randall.
Yes.
I'm fixed to retire and we're trying to get him on board. There's a training station in January. I'd like to bring him on board and get him in that training station so we get, there's a lot over there to learn and there's a lot being changed right now. So it's, it's really a good time for a new guy to come on, because we're getting him to a brand-new computer program. There's been a lot of laws change. I would like to stay on for a while to make sure he's got his feet on the ground and then we're off and then I'm out of here. So with that said, I'd like to have Dewey start early enough to make that training class in Indianapolis. And I'd like to be out of there by February.
Well, I would make a motion that we appoint Dewey effective January 1st, and then unfortunately, we don't get to make the decision of how long you can stay and get paid simultaneously. That is completely up to the council and I understand that you have plans to go before them to ask for that appropriation, to see if they'll allow you to stay to help cross train, which I think is a good idea. But that's out of our hands and hopefully that works out with them for both of you.
Thank you.
So that's my motion that we'll appoint Dewey and.
And I would second that motion and also in support of you going before council to be able to carry on the transition.
All favor?
Aye.
Three zero.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. I look forward to working with you and I've got some big changes to fill here, but.
And we want to say a big thank you to you, Claude, for all the work that you've done with yours.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
One case that I would love to get done before I quit.
I guess you better get busy.
Well, I'll be honest with you. I've been screwing around with that father for probably eight years now.
Wow.
And the guy held him down, 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 and he died.
Oh.
And we're trying now to get the benefits for his widow. And they're saying it's not service-connected because he committed suicide.
Really?
So that's gonna affect.
Well, we wish you well with that.
Yeah.
And thank you, Ron, for getting us all connected with Dewey.
Yeah. Thank you.
I've got a problem with that in January.
Good.
Very good.
Thank you. Merry Christmas.
Thank you.
Chad, we have you up next.
Good morning.
Hi.
So I am here today to make a request for the renewal of the Agreement for Performance of Economic Development Services. This, the last time we presented this was three years ago, as it was previously a three-year agreement. I've changed the planning, or essentially the language for the agreement with Roy's help and some discussion amongst our board to go to annual renewal instead of three years.
I told you guys it was a three-year and then I corrected myself.
You corrected.
So it was one year, not three.
Yeah, so we're gonna go to a single year, so we'll come to you each year to evaluate and determine renewal versus a three-year. And I'm doing that with all of the communities as well, for a couple of different reasons. Yours has always indicated a specific dollar amount. Theirs had indicated previously a percentage of their seat of tax and to come into line with what State Board of Accounts wants to see for a fee, there needs to be an actual dollar amount, not a percentage of a tax. So yours didn't have that, but again, we're switching all of the fee for services for all of the communities that we have to single-year agreements. And if you have any questions or anything.
I don't have any questions. No, I made some further revisions Friday after talking with Chad about them. Part of the changes had to do with changing from a three-year to a one-year. So revisions like notice and terminate, like six months after it's effective on these dates, like you gave them notice in August, you wouldn't, we didn't want the contract to run on. So I think we're both happy with the changes that were made in that last revision.
I'd make a motion to approve it as is, then.
I will second that.
All favor?
Aye.
Three zero. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thanks, Chad.
Just two copies of this?
Yeah. Everybody's got blue, what the heck?
I don't know where I got it, but it's a nice pen.
That's what it's gonna be. Spoke to that individual a little bit. More conversation after the holidays.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Lisa.
We had an application for the Board of Zoning Appeals.
Okay.
It's Tracy Gentis. I believe I forwarded the letter to you.
Are we gonna do that now or at our normal meeting in January?
Oh, doesn't matter.
I'm open either way, so you guys.
Okay. That's the only one we've had, right?
Mm-hmm. We did all the others last meeting.
Make a motion to appoint Tracy Gentis, is that correct?
Mm-hmm.
To the BZA.
Second?
Yes, second. Sorry.
All favor?
I got a splinter up at the thing.
Oh, here, let me do that. Aye.
Three zero.
All right. Let me see, I think I'll take care of that for a doctor.
The next item.
Home rule ordinance.
Is this attached to the county health insurance?
Yes, for health reimbursement accounts.
And we're good with that?
Yeah, I prepared it. It's been a while.
Order number.
2019-24.
Motion to approve it?
2019-24.
Twenty-four, okay. 2019-24.
I'd second that.
Second. All favor?
Aye.
Three zero.
And then just county-owned vehicles would be next.
Are we ready to delve into that?
Yeah, I, well, I think we need to take some action. If, you know, I prepared a memo on that. If you're satisfied with the memo, then my conclusion from that is that assuming the personal use is more than the commute, I mean, we've talked with Nate and Nate says he uses the county-owned vehicle to commute to and from work, period. No other use. So in that case, there's a rule for a commute. But not all county-owned vehicles are used the same. So if an individual is using a county-owned vehicle for more than a commute personal use, then they're required to keep a log, mileage. And in terms of the value, the IRS regs say you have to, the theory is, the value is whatever you would pay to lease it, which is like, who's gonna lease a seven-year-old vehicle with 200,000 miles, you know? But anyways, they say you gotta determine the fair market value and then you prorate that between how much is personal use and how much is business use. If we're going to follow that and require them to keep logs, detailed logs of usage, I think you need to start that at least January 1 rather than mid-year next year. In talking with Lisa, community corrections are turned to flip, turning in three vehicles they presently own for two, not new ones, but replacements. And Lisa says the paperwork establishes what the county's paying for that use. So that would be appropriate time to take that figure and then you would prorate that based on the percentage, personal use, business use. From what I've researched, the county can decide, what we're talking about is attributing a taxable benefit. What's the benefit to the employee of using a county-owned vehicle? So that's a taxable benefit. They'd have to, you know, we'd have to report and they'd have to pay income tax on it. One account newspaper said, well, it's a pay cut. It's not a pay cut. It's an additional benefit that you've not previously perhaps been taxed on, that you'll need to recognize and report. So with respect to those two vehicles, if we know what the county's paying for them, then we've got, by looking at the IRS tables, you know, if the table says if you paid 8,000 for it, here's the annual rental value and that's what you're prorating between personal, non-personal use. Now, that's, that's the taxable benefit that the employee's receiving. And then it's a matter of the county can elect not to withhold income tax on that, but from what I read, you may have to withhold FICA. So there's some decisions that have to be made and implemented. So if you're satisfied with the memo, then it might be appropriate to distribute that. The specific question was in terms of an issue before the community corrections, but this has, it's not a community corrections issue. It's any county-owned vehicle and employee using it.
And requirements are set by the internal.
Yeah, IRS, right.
Service, not the county. It's not things we make up. It's.
And the option would be to park that car in a parking lot and when they need it.
Not use it for personal use at all.
Come get it, use it for the job required and return it back and take their vehicle, so.
So I would make a motion to move forward with the changes as the memo outlines and that way the county is protected so that we don't.
Besides the memorandum, I've also been starting work on a policy. One I found was a policy adopted by Stark County. It's NOCS. And so I've wanted to continue on that if we're going to pursue this, so.
And I think we need to, to protect the county.
I have a call in Kenny Hale at Morgan County and he hasn't responded to that regard. He gave me a couple of his points we had conference at Indianapolis, but not to that. And looking for this, I went to Barnes and Thornburg. Each year has, have a workshop for government-employed attorneys, so I went to that. This year, for the first time, I was able to take that meeting by video in Fort Wayne. I didn't have to drive all the way to Indianapolis. But one, one speaker was talking about useful websites and so I went to the DLG and looked at their audit reports and found one county, like five in a row, and they say the same thing. You're supposed to, you know, report this, this use. So haven't seen, I know they're checking, but I looked at Wells County. I didn't see any, any kind of issues on any audits of Wells County, but why wait till somebody tells us?
You act a little concerned.
Well, we do the commuting. We do commuting for. Well, we do the commuting, we do commuting for everyone who has a, a vehicle now, um, but.
Well, one, one issue was, uh, well, we just, we're just like the sheriff's department. Uh, the IRS regulations with respect to, uh, employer-provided vehicles, they have some exceptions to this accounting. You don't have to account if you're driving a clearly marked police vehicle. The theory of the regs is, well, they've got it so butchered up, nobody would even consider driving that for personal use. Like an undercover car might be different now we're, now that we're going more, uh, more people want pickup trucks now or they want SUVs. So, uh, the, uh, the clearly marked police vehicles, law enforcement vehicles are exceptions to that accounting, but were to fall under that exception, it has to be a clearly marked police vehicle and it's got to be a law enforcement officer. And according to, to my research, community corrections doesn't fall under that definition. They expanded, uh, that definition to not just law enforcement officers, but also some public safety officials. But again, there's a specific definition, uh, definition for what is a public safety official and in my opinion, they don't qualify under, under that either. An example might be EMA. I mean, the county's got a, uh, an EMA vehicle and it's usually parked in the, in the, in the parking lot there. It's got EMA and all of this is clearly marked and, and they're clearly trained and to do, uh, the, uh, the sorts of services that come under that definition. Community corrections doesn't. Uh, I'm not trying to pick out community corrections, it might be county highway department employees. Anybody's got a take-home vehicle, if it's, if it's a commute, which Nate says he does as a county engineer, that's under one rule. If it's not, uh, if, if they're making any, any personal use, uh, then, uh, that's what's got to be prorated between personal use and business use and they, and they need to document it.
Comment?
Yes.
The personal use of a company-owned vehicle, whether it be private or whether it be public to government, that use is an addition for that particular employee.
That's what we're saying.
Okay, thank you.
We're saying the personal use of the county-provided vehicle is a, is a compensable benefit.
Yep.
And, and when it's reported in the paper that somebody said, well, you're, you're docking us, we're having to get cut in pay, we're not. We're just saying you need to, we need to report this benefit you're receiving as part of your county employment and, and pay, and in the case of the county, maybe even withhold, uh, as we do the, the salary portions.
Well, a lot of people don't realize that Nate and I from our department and the highway foreman, every month we sign a payroll form that we pay tax on. It's not a free, like, we pay for that.
Well, we, we didn't invent this, you know? Uh, the, the county adopted, I think it was 2017, we had an ordinance and it's in the, it's in the county employee handbook, that, that personal use of county, you know, is, is a benefit, so.
Well, in the private sector, this is just standard.
Right. We're, we're no different. It's no, it's, it's no different from, from government-owned vehicles. We're just saying it's employer-provided. Your employer just happens to be a government, but it's the same rules.
So you made a motion. Kev, you did second that?
I did.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Three, zero. We'll move forward. Thank you. Appreciate that explanation. So, we have anything else?
I have a question regarding the chamber appointment next year. Um, tomorrow is picture day. Would it be okay if I continue in that position next year?
Yes.
Well, thanks for asking, yes. This might be my last time in that position, so.
That's awesome. Does that, so can we trade? So does that mean I can still serve as EMS president?
You absolutely can do that.
Thanks. Turned him out as fair play, right?
I wasn't there for the December economic picture, so.
Neither was half of everybody else. We did not.
Oh, you did? Okay.
Four people.
Oh, really?
That were maintaining into the next year.
Okay.
There were more people than that, there were only four that would continue, so we'll take it up to January 8th.
Okay. If I'm elected, uh, serve on that one too? Okay. All right. Audience, any questions for us before we adjourn for the next meeting and holiday and Christmas and New Year and hearing nothing? Entertained a motion and adjourned.
Motion to adjourn.
Done. We are finished.
Thank you.